Good evening. It's April 20th, 2015, and we'll call our meeting of the Oskaloosa City Council to order. First item, we'll start with our invocation from Pastor John Nelson from the Central Reform Church, please. All rise.
Will you please, will you please pray with me? Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and the love that you show to us each day. We acknowledge that you are king over all things, and you have appointed these leaders for this time and place to do a work that will allow our community to flourish. So we pray for discernment, wisdom, energy, and courage as they make decisions this evening. And we pray that what is done in these moments is to the glory of Jesus and to our joy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Charlie, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Call Jarry.
Here.
Jimenez.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Van Zetten.
Yes.
For State.
Yes.
Wally.
Here.
Gates.
Here. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council and ask to keep their statements brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to the speaking to the full council, so concerns may be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone that cares to speak this evening? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Julie Dunn-McKee, 1810 South Fifth Street here in Oskaloosa. And I'm here as a member of, sorry, I rode my bike here. I'm still a little flustered. I'm here as a member of Oskaloosa Rides Bikes, a bicycle club here in town, and the Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition that put together the Walk, Run, Ride Oskaloosa Plan, and also as a community member. And I just wanted to say that I look forward to being able to ride our bikes downtown to have lunch, or to do anything, to shop downtown, to be able to park our bikes, to feel safe getting to the trail from downtown, and I look forward to what the city can become if this is implemented. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. I'm Sharon Ferguson. I live at 2692 305th Street, Oskaloosa. I'm a registered nurse. I work at the hospital here, have been here for about eight years. I've been working in the community for the last 20 years, 28 years or so, with children and adults within our community, many of them not able to walk on their own. So I come to you and I ask you to vote proudly tonight on this policy that's ahead of you. I've pushed children in strollers all over the city, from north to south and southeast to west. Many times we were in the street because the sidewalks are either in poor condition or no sidewalk at all. I've asked many of you to actually take walks around the neighborhood to see what I'm talking about, and specifically to go out to Walmart. This is the store that was built at the edge of town with their motto, "Save money, live better." And it's not a safe way to get out there if you're walking in a scooter, pushing a stroller, or a wheelchair. My point is this, I have many patients who come to see me now, and they have to walk, they're in a wheelchair, or they're in a scooter, and they're coming to the hospital. And there are many streets that are not safe to navigate because the sidewalks are either too narrow, they haven't been well taken care of, maybe the people that live in those houses don't know how to take care of them, or maybe they're there as a renter. We have a high area of our houses in the community that are being rented out, and so the renter is not responsible for taking care of that sidewalk. The person who owns that building is not taking care of the sidewalk. So I just ask you if you would like Oskaloosa to shine, to think about this referendum that's ahead of you, the Oskaloosa Active Transportation Plan, and see how that might help our community shine. Thank you.
My name is Roger Bean. I live at 1714 South Second Street. I'm just new to Oskaloosa.
Excuse me, if you could speak into the microphone, that's still being picked up for the cameras, please.
You better, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm used to just speaking out. I've only lived here for two years, and so this is new community to me, and one of the things that helped decide us where we're going to live was the trail, because it was, my wife and I both walk and bike, and so it was really kind of a plus to have that in the community. And then I got an email from Natalie about the committee that they were forming in Walk, Run, and Bike, and I went to the first committee meeting about two or three weeks ago. And I was so impressed with the plan that they had developed, because it covered walking, running, and biking. And then also another thing that I was impressed with, which is kind of different than the politics of today, they all got along and worked well together. I mean, the committee did. I always said, "Man, this is a good committee." They, you know, they gave, and you know, I'm going to say something, and so they worked together for the betterment of Oskaloosa, and I guess that's what really impressed me. And the other thing, I taught health for about 40 years, and one of the things that I always stress to the students was that health and wellness. You know, if you've got your health and you work on your wellness, you're a long ways in your life. And I think this, this plan that they have developed, the committee has developed, is a very good plan that would improve not only the people who live in Oskaloosa, but the people who live around Oskaloosa, their health and wellness. And I guess I'd like to see the council, you know, it's like any wellness plan, you have to take that first step. If you take the first step, then maybe you can take the second step. And I realize that this plan's going to take a while, but anytime you can take that first step and get it started, then that's, to me, is the most difficult part. Then the other parts start falling in place once you've taken the first step. And so I guess I'd like to see the council take the first step and approve the Walk, Run, Bike Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Burnett. I live at 1603 South Park Avenue here in Oskaloosa. As I think the council's aware, MCDG has formed a housing task force to help take a look, a focused look anyway, at what can be done to address some of Oskaloosa's housing issues, and we're wanting to partner with the city council to improve our community. One of the biggest issues that we've uncovered so far is what we believe are the need in development of implementation of some higher standards throughout our community. We believe that the raising of those standards will improve not only Oskaloosa's appearance, but help protect homeowners' investments. In gathering some best practices, we've visited Mount Pleasant so far, and we met with their mayor, city administrator, and city code officials down there. And what they shared with us was, I don't know if it was surprising, but it was interesting. They shared with us that they started 12 years ago, and the most important thing they felt improved their condition of their community is the support that the elected officials gave to those folks that were doing the job in the community. In other words, the folks that were enforcing the codes that were already there. So when invariably you have folks in the community that don't agree with the fact that they can't do certain things based on those codes that are helping improve the appearance of the community, what they found was, is once there was a unified effort on the elected officials apart to support those people and have some of those difficult decisions, their community began to look better. And I understand that tonight on the agenda, you have such a chance to do that, and I just wanted to know, wanted you to know that MCGG is in support of your efforts to help us improve the looks of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Emily Jorgensen, and I live at 116 Highland Avenue. I am a, I'm here for the Walk, Run, Bike Coalition. I am a new mother, and we have a sidewalk that begins, or I should say, ends on our property, and we have been going on so many walks now that we have a little man to push around. We are only able to go about five houses in either direction before that sidewalk ends. And just thinking about my son and riding the bike in the future, it would be so wonderful if I didn't have to worry about him on the street when, when he's riding that bike. So I would just really appreciate if you guys would vote yes tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brianna Bartlett, 1101 Third Avenue East, Oskaloosa. I'm also here in support of the Walk, Run, Ride Transportation Plan. As a community member, as an avid cyclist, as a runner, I just would like to see the roads safer for travel. As a teacher, it'd be nice to see students and families able to use bike lanes or sidewalks more happily and safely, and just to make it also friendlier for people visiting, visiting Oskaloosa. I know we had, as part of Oskaloosa Rides Bikes, the bicycle club, we just had a ride last Saturday, and I think with the ride around Oskaloosa, there was about 18 last year, and they doubled their numbers this year. So it was exciting to see so many more people getting involved and being active here in town, several of those visitors to our community. So we'd like to see it friendlier for those people visiting and for our own community members, so I'd like to see you support that plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else that would care to speak? All right, not, we will continue on. The next item is the consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are considered routine in nature and no discussion is anticipated. With that said, I would like to at least point out a couple of items. Item D is an appointment, potential appointment of Charlie Comfort to the Oskaloosa Airport Commission to fill an unexpired term until the end of this year. Item E is the reappointment of Sarah Tarbell and Andrew Jensen to terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission that will end on April 30th of 2020. And then we had item F, which is a voluntary annexation into the city of some city property. And then item G is a resolution to close South Eighth for a church activity. And item H is approving the disposal of surplus city-owned equipment. So I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a question on item F. I'm looking at that, is that really $804,000 for that bridge? Are we doing anything else to that?
Yeah, that's, we had a study completed after the floods, 2009, I believe it was, when the water backed up, and we couldn't access the plant or the shelter. So Kirk and Michael completed a study for us when we tried to apply for federal funds, and that was their opinion for, for improvements.
Just for that bridge?
To improve the bridge.
I just have sticker shock, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I can't believe that 20-foot bridge is $805,000.
It's more than just a 20-foot bridge. I mean, again, the scope of the project is larger than that, so what we're trying to do is prevent flooding, having that road flooded out. So we're going to be raising that road, increasing the size of the bridge, and then also having a bike lane there for, for the trail.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Call Jarry.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Van Zetten.
Yes.
For State.
Yes.
Wally.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes. Moving on to our regular agenda. The first item is no longer needed. It was dealing with a code violation, but I understand that that has been addressed outside of the meeting, so we're okay there. Is that true? All right. So move on to item B. This is to consider an ordinance to vacate and sell 134.25 feet by 16.5 feet of the north-south alley adjacent to 815 Fourth Avenue West. This is the second reading. Jeff Shelton, owner of the property, has requested the portion of the, or at 815 Fourth Avenue West, has requested the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to his property be vacated. Mr. Shelton would like to purchase the land in order to maintain his property and for other aesthetic reasons. The city conducted a survey of the property owners with direct access to his alley. Among the residents that responded, three total, two of them, Patterson-Hahn Incorporated and Shelton, wanted the alley to be vacated, and one, M. Shrego &amp; Son Incorporated, did not want the alley vacated. The owner of M. Shrego &amp; Son Incorporated stated they did not want the alley vacated because they need the alley access in order to maintain their fence. This alley contains no utility infrastructure. The city council previously approved this alley vacation in 2005. However, since the quitclaim deed was never paid, the alley was not vacated. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at their March 9th, 2015 meeting, and recommended by a vote of six to zero that city council approve the alley vacate request. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Van Zetten.
Yes.
For State.
Yes.
Wally.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Call Jarry.
Yes. In June of 2014, the Oskaloosa City Council adopted a resolution to support the actions aligned with achieving Blue Zone certification. A master bicycle plan and a ma- master pedestrian plan were two items that were selected to help achieve certification. In November of 2014, a group of Oskaloosa residents, Blue Zones project representatives, and city staff came together to make walking and biking a safe and healthy choice for Oskaloosa residents. After several meetings, the group formally named themselves the Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition. The Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition has worked with the city of Oskaloosa and Oskaloosa Blue Zones to create the Walk, Run, Ride Oskaloosa, Oskaloosa's Active Transportation Plan. The group had started with a master bicycle plan, but worked to include pedestrian items to create an overall active transportation plan. The Active Transportation Plan outlines goals and action items that will guide the city on future bicycle and pedestrian improvements. The plan outlines how the coalition can work with the city to achieve the goals in the plan, such as securing funds for improvement. Should be noted that the formal adoption of the Walk, Run, Ride Oskaloosa, Oskaloosa's Active Transportation Plan will assist the community in its efforts to become a certified Blue Zones community. I believe we have a presentation from Dylan at this point.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Dylan Wolfinger. I'm the management analyst here for the city of Oskaloosa.
Can I just jump in here real quick? Is there a motion on this?
Is this just a presentation?
There's a presentation, and there's a request that if the council would like to adopt it, they would.
Okay. Do we need a motion first, or should you hear the presentation first?
My preference would be to give the presentation so that you have the background, further background on the items.
Take your word.
Thank you. Again, my name is Dylan Wolfinger, management analyst here for the city of Oskaloosa. I'm excited tonight to present you with the Walk, Run, Ride Oskaloosa, Oskaloosa's Active Transportation Plan. Purpose of my presentation tonight is to show you the plan, show you how walking and biking can improve, the improvements we can make here in Oskaloosa, review the costs associated with them, and also consider formal adoption of the plan. In June of 2014, Oskaloosa City Council adopted a resolution to support the actions aligned with achieving Blue Zone certification. A master bicycle plan and a master pedestrian plan were two items that were selected to help achieve this certification. In November of 2014, a group of Oskaloosa residents, now called the Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition, came together to make walking and biking a safe and healthy choice for Oskaloosa residents. The creating of the plan involves several community members, as I have shown here, and also local business owners. The Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition worked with both city staff, Oskaloosa Blue Zones, on creating an active transportation plan. The coalition created four main goals for the plan. First is to create a network of bicycle and pedestrian routes with wayfinding signs to reach priority destinations and the recreation trail. They also wanted to create an active transportation network that incorporates art into the culture of Oskaloosa. They wanted to work on a regional level to hope to expand bicycle and pedestrian routes to priority destinations outside of Oskaloosa, and become a city with attractive, comfortable, convenient, welcoming, and secure transportation network. In order to reach the goals, the coalition created action items. Each action item contains an objective, performance measures that will help ensure that the plan is met. The first action item is to increase bicycle activity. Increased bicycle activity offers many benefits for the community. Encouraging bicycling begins with convenient and safe places to ride. Oskaloosa will work to establish a network of bicycle routes to help safe cycling throughout the city of Oskaloosa and on to establish recreation trail. Creation of signed rights to priority, a sound, a sign, excuse me, assigned routes, all right, sorry about that, to priority destinations, including schools, parks, recreational facilities, and down, the downtown district, restaurants, grocery stores, and more. The map I have shown in front of you shows potential routes that will be assigned for bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signs. The priority destinations were selected by the Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition and are shown on the map. These streets were picked because they are best maintained and provide the best access for people on bicycles and walking. We want to improve walkability. Walking safely to priority destination is essential for community. Walking is a great alternative to driving and addresses problems such as pollution, traffic congestion, and health issues. Commitment to a sidewalk completion plan will provide benefits to, to the community for years to come. The map shown here shows several sidewalks that could be improved upon. They are prioritized by, number one, connecting the existing sidewalk to existing, number two, extending existing, and number three, connecting or extending new sidewalk. Bicycle parking. The community should have convenient and secure bicycle parking throughout Oskaloosa. A key advantage to bicycle parking is adequate parking. Key strategies include installing additional racks, encouraging bicycle parking near commercial and office buildings, recreational sites, grocery stores, multi-unit housing developments, and other key destinations throughout Oskaloosa. Update crosswalks is another action item. In order for a pedestrian to feel safe while walking to a destination, they have to feel safe while crossing the street. Recent developments in geometric design features, traffic control devices, and other pedestrian technologies have improved safety for pedestrians across the board. Updates to crosswalks should be included in any new road construction and rehabilitation There's also education, safety, and health promotion. A community-wide effort to educate bicyclists, motorists, and general public about bicycle safety and the benefits of bicycling will help increase the amount of people riding bicycles. Developing safe bicycle habits in children and adults is important. Marketing bicycling as a healthy, fun, and convenient way to travel will also encourage bicycle use. Safe routes to school. The Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition wants to continue what the city has already started with Safe Routes to School. Safe Routes to School is a nationwide program whose goals are designed to increase safety and promote walking and bicycling to school for students from kindergarten to eighth grade. Evidence has shown that adequate levels of physical activity and proper nutrition play a significant role in student success. Yet, in the past two to three decades, the childhood obesity rate has doubled for children aged two to five, and more than tripled for children aged six to 11. We want to be able to work on a regional plan. We want to create a network that brings in people from different towns and communities to Oskaloosa's downtown and recreational trail. We want to seek out other areas that allow for both on-road and off-road biking. Off-road bicycling can include mountain biking, unpaved trails, and gravel roads. Like any plan, there are potential costs. The total cost for this one is right around $6.1 million. Eighty-three percent of that is actually sidewalk improvements, 15% of that is crosswalk improvements, and 3% of it is the proposed bicycle improvements we have put in the plan. Costs will vary depending on project. The completion of each action item will be dependent on city council approval, funding, community input, topography, and resources. Shown here are some of the bicycle costs that we have incorporated into the plan. They reflect some of the projects that are included with the action items. Also, we include pedestrian cost. Overall cost of implementing the sidewalk plan is included, also updating crosswalks and intersections along Market and A Avenue. There's also potential funding. This will become from a mix of public, private, and grant funding. The Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition wants to help by working on writing grants. When the plan was created, there was an initial timeline to ensure that, that some of the actions were met. In April, the Bicycle Coalition wanted the plan presented to the city council. In May, the coalition is preparing for a grant that they applied for, and if awarded, they will do several bicycle improvements. In June, the coalition will be meeting again to research funding ideas and possible other ideas to add to the plan. In October, they want to work with the city on funding different opportunities. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present. I know the Bicycle Coalition has worked hard to prepare a plan that will benefit the city of Oskaloosa, and they are excited to show the city. City staff, along with the Oskaloosa Bicycle Coalition, recommend that the Oskaloosa City Council formally adopt Walk, Run, Ride Oskaloosa, Oskaloosa's Active Transportation Plan, so that it can help guide the city on becoming a more walkable and bikeable community that supports safe and healthy active transportation. I thank you for your time, and I present, or I gather any questions that you may have.
Am I to understand that you are presenting a $6.2 million project here?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's not going to be all at once, though. It would be most likely over a large timeline.
Point of procedure here, are we fine to go ahead and ask questions as the presentation, or should we go have a motion and then consider that part of our discussion?
It's fine to go ahead and ask questions, sir.
Dylan, on the, on the cost issue, if I, if I heard it correctly, you said 3% of it dealt with the bicycle piece? Is that correct? So that'd be, rough math, $180,000 of funding. And then when I look at the cost, I had a hard time getting anywhere close to that for the things that were listed, so I just wonder if I was missing something.
The, the actual wayfinding network is something that we would work on, and the continual improvements to bicycle racks is something that, it's not spelled out exactly how many bicycle racks we would need, but it was an estimation in the plan.
So that's part of, we think that would add up to those kinds of dollars.
Well, the wayfinding network could see higher dollars, but it would just be over time that we would make the improvements, so eventually it could become that dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
And of the sidewalk costs, you said 83% were sidewalk cost, and how much of that will the general public have to stand out of their own pocket if we replace some of the sidewalks in front of their house, or have that done?
That would be a policy question for the city council. That's the beauty behind having a plan. You, as council, have directed me on, well, when I first started, and then when some of you were appointed or elected afterwards, to come up with plans for paying for infrastructure. We've done that with our road network, we're doing that with our sewer system, we're doing that with our, our sidewalks, and we're also doing that with any other pedestrian trails, bicycle lanes, et cetera. So the, the nice thing is that you, as policymakers, can decide if we put it in at no cost to the resident, or if you want to assess them. The policy that we've used for new construction, so if we take a seal coat road and we upgrade it to concrete with curb gutter, that's assessed typically. That's a resolution that was passed by this council. There are instances where we're going back and putting in sidewalks where there have been gaps, and that has come at no cost to the resident other than the taxes, the tax money that was used to pay for.
Are you guys planning on putting sidewalks on both sides of the street?
We, as the city, that includes the city council, yes.
I don't, I want to know what their proposal is. They got $6.2 million. I'd like to hear from them. What is your proposal? Both sides of the street? Both sides of the street or just one?
I think that a good network creates on both sides of the street.
So you're proposing, this group is proposing, we run sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's included in the plan. You can see the pedestrian plan is... Show the map, please. Depending on the location, that'll dictate whether or not there's improvements by the city for one side of the street or for both. And again, this is filling in the network that we already have, and that's what Priority One consists of. Or extending these existing, which is Priority Two, or creating new, which would be Priority And this is to help us address that problem that's plagued us for many years, which is the sidewalks to nowhere. So this is the plan that helps address that, and for us, hopefully dispel that topic moving forward.
Are we also talking about the sidewalks that we don't have now, like on 11th Street and some of those streets out by the hospital where they don't have sidewalks on either side? Are you talking about that, too?
Again, referencing the plan that we have, that outlines where we'd recommend putting in sidewalks.
Well, I think you're...
I mean, if I saw that right, it's 11th. Those ones brought up. That's on this one, isn't it? It's the red.
There's portions of 11th, yes.
To the park, so anyway.
I think you're very low on your estimate, then.
Less of the beauty of it.
Very low, absolutely.
We would update it every year. We put together for capital projects, we put together five-year, in some instances for streets, we put together 10-year plans.
But there's no timeframe, and there's no commitment by project until the project comes up, correct?
Right, and we vote for it.
You're going to vote for a $6.2 million project? We didn't even take this to study session?
No, I'm just saying what Tom is saying.
Well, I'm hearing, yeah, let's vote for something and then deal with it later. I mean, there's so much here that we can't even, we can't even get sidewalks straight. They've got bike lanes up there, they've got shared bike lanes. Yeah, there's some good stuff here. I'm not saying there isn't. I'm saying there's some massive stuff, and to drop it here and go, oh, by the way, it's $6.2 million, let's get a commitment for it and then figure it out later. No. No.
And that probably is a good point that we do need to make sure we're all clear on. Are we committing the city to spend $6.2 million over a defined period of time? Because I don't understand it that way.
No. I would be remiss to not put together a plan that showed you a potential cost. You'd be yelling at me for not having a potential cost of implementing a plan that I've asked you to adopt.
And there's no time.
This plan overall...
That's the beauty of it. It's a plan. It helps us predict what we want to do in the future, and if you don't want to do it as a council, you can, you can say that.
I guess I consider it similar to our capital improvement plan that we look at for five to 10 years. We're not committing to anything specific on that project. We're trying to put out how we might need to spend our resources, but we deal with that each budget year, as well as we evaluate what's on that plan, so...
Correct. The road plan, we don't ask you to approve $30-plus million for road improvements. We have a plan that we look at, we present to you what we have in available funding. If you would like to bond for additional funds, you have that option. But if you try to work within the parameters that we have financially, then you, as council, give us direction on what you'd like to see.
Why don't we, why don't we move forward with a motion? We can certainly have more discussion after that, after we have a motion. Does anyone care to make a motion on this item?
Whoa. Anybody want to decide what the motion is? I mean, there's a bunch here.
The motion, that's a good point. The motion was to adopt the resolution of this active participation plan as presented.
The whole resolution, $6.2 million on stuff that we haven't even talked about. Is that correct?
That is the resolution to adopt this plan as presented. Is anyone there to make a motion on that resolution?
I have some seconds.
Now we can have further discussion. Please go ahead, Jason, if you have further comments.
I think at very least, this should have been presented as a study session to work this thing out. I mean, there's a ton of details here. I mean, to sit here and even go down this road until we can figure out what we want? I mean, I think we're spinning our wheels. I'm not really sure the need is there, to be honest with you.
The need for bicycle sidewalks?
We've had bicycles in this town since the 1800s.
Yeah, but I mean, which part?
And, you know, you talk about the obesity in our children. Well, take some of the buses off the road, and maybe they can start walking again, like they used to. Well, Scotty, you bring up a good point. I mean, you sit there and you're asking about bicycles. What do you know about the bicycle plan that's in?
Yeah, it looks to me as one of the first things they're going to be doing is coming up with the grant for the new bicycle amenities, is that correct? And we'll have to approve that, of course, but it's, and it's based on getting this Walmart Foundation grant. So the first thing when it comes to bicycles will be some of the bicycle racks and other amenities, which they look like they're pretty...
You know very little, other than what's, what's in that one sentence there.
Well, Jason...
I'm just, I'm just saying.
We had a study session, if I recall, did we not, for a couple hours earlier, where we kind of went down this path and gave them some directions and asked them to come back with a plan, and now they've come back with a plan. And in the plan, they show where they want to improve the bicycle. If you refer to which page is that, Dylan, where it has the bicycle trails or roads that you want to do. And that also talks about pedestrian routes, and it shows which sidewalks they're thinking about doing in detail. So if you sit down and look at it, they've got, provided us with some good information.
So I just want to make sure. You support the bike lanes. You support putting sidewalks on both sides of the street.
I support this overall plan, and as it comes small part, we can support various ideas or modify it.
I'm just asking you, do you support sidewalks on both sides of the street? I mean, it's part of the plan.
I don't know. It depends on where it is. Like, we were discussing the grant. I am so glad there's a sidewalk now on each side of that street, because for years I had to cross the street, a kind of unsafe corner to go down the other way because there was no sidewalk. And now there's a sidewalk on each side in this level. So I think we will probably have to decide as we look at the street.
I see where you're coming from. I support the plan as it stands. These are just all estimates. These are just all ideas. As we approach each of these sidewalks, for example, there's going to be cases, types that it doesn't make sense to put sidewalks on both sides of the street, even though the plan says so. We'll deal with that when it, when it comes.
Cars that originally get there.
And we've been talking about sidewalks as long as I've been on council, and when I was on P&amp;Z, about sidewalks throughout the city, and it's taken some time to get something even put in. But to me, this whole thing is just a plan. The same thing with bike lanes. We're not going to be paving white lines all over town or anything like that, but it's a plan.
How do you know that? You don't know that. You don't even know, he didn't even discuss what was in the shared bike lane.
Right, you're right. But when we start discussing these things, then we'll dig deeper into it.
But you're going to vote okay on something before you even know about it?
It's just a plan. In my view, it's a plan.
I really kicking myself in the, you know what? I go down C Avenue East to go home every day, and we poured that sidewalk that Scotty just mentioned, and as I was going eastbound up the hill, there were seven boys on bicycles charging up that sidewalk as fast as they could go. And I thought, you know, build it, and they'll come. They could have been on the C Avenue Hill, that's a very narrow road, and they were on the sidewalk. And I should have beat them to the end and taken a picture of them up there, but they were faster than they.
But were they supposed to be?
Huh?
You said they was on bicycles. Were they supposed to be on the sidewalk?
Jake says they can ride on the sidewalks.
Oh, yeah.
When I was a kid, they told me I couldn't, so I don't know, but yeah, we can.
They didn't want you on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That was personal.
My driving ability, I know.
I guess I just have a couple of comments. Number one, you know, I look at the members that make up this committee, that put this plan together, and while I don't know every one of them personally, over the eight years I've lived here, I've gotten to know many of them, and I have a ton of respect for the people that I do know on this, and I think that I would like to congratulate them on their work first, but also to acknowledge that there's pretty bright people on that. And if that's a plan that they believe in for this community, then that's going to get a lot of my support right there, because I don't think these people would ask us to support something that they hadn't thought through pretty well, and that wouldn't be very good for our community. So thank you to everyone that's worked on this to this point. And I also received several emails. Some of the people already spoke tonight, but we, I received letters of support, emails that somebody did. Kathy Drost from Betsy Duffy at the Peanut Pub. We got something from the Regional 15 Director, supporting, letter of support from the DOT. Quite honestly, the only negative I've heard on this comes from within our council. I haven't heard a single thing from anybody in the community that hasn't been in support of this yet. Now, I may get that after tonight, but I've heard a lot of support for it. The only, I shouldn't say negative. The only question, real question about it comes from within, but again, I want to go back and congratulate the folks that, and thank the people that have worked so hard on this to bring it to this point.
I have heard several people that have contacted me that said they don't support this plan at all.
And I was just speaking for what I heard.
And it's not, it's not necessarily they think it's a good idea, it's about $6.2 million bucks. You guys got to pay for this at some point. At some point, you got to come up with the money.
Absolutely.
And when we're, we're not Chicago, we're not New York, we're not Minneapolis, we're here, and we're able to get around with some of these things without having to have that. So their perspective was, hey, man, I'm on a bike, I can get around here in two minutes. It's not a problem. So they couldn't really even understand why we're putting it on the table.
In some ways, I think we have to kind of look at this in this way. This is a plan. Just like if I had a plan to go to the University of Iowa to better myself and get a degree in teaching in four years, I wouldn't be able to say on the day I started which classes I was going to take or how I was going to continue. And maybe after two or three years, I could see that wasn't where I wanted to go, and I'd go somewhere else, just as if we start this, in five or six years, we decide, no, this isn't the direction or money. We had a plan, we're going to deviate from our plan. So we, our goal, our overall goal is just of me going to the University of Iowa and bettering myself, is to better our community.
I had a plan to buy a Ferrari for $1 million bucks until I saw it was $1 million bucks.
Yeah, well, then you didn't buy it.
Then you changed it.
You didn't buy it, did you?
You come out, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we don't have to buy this if, as we go down the road, it doesn't benefit us, or it's not something that we think will make our community better. But at this point in time, it's something that's been offered to us that looks like it might help improve our community.
Where does the money come from? If you're, even if you're saying that, I agree with you. You got to at least have some plan.
They gave a nice little list here, Jason, of different places where they're going to go to try and get funding.
They're not going to get $6.2 million from grants.
And they may not.
All right. At some point, we're going to have to go back to the tax base.
Then they'll have to modify.
Or we're going to go after the franchise fee.
They'll have to modify.
Or we're going to come up with some other clever thing to come up to raise...
Or we may not be able to do it.
Yeah, and we might have to say, that's a dream we had, and we're not going to be able to complete our dream. But this is just a roadmap to maybe get us where we want to go.
And I like the comments I heard earlier. Any long journey takes at least one step. We've got to get started. We don't have to say we're going to walk the whole way, but we got to try something. We had a strategy session several months ago where we challenged staff and Cody Michael to really improve the community, and we'll deal with that item later, but this is another example. We want to improve our community, and we're hearing from so many people that they see this as an improvement. I think we need to start. We're not committing to spending $6.2 million. We're committing to take a positive step.
Doug, did you say you got one of those emails from the DOT?
It's from Area 15.
Area 15, it said letters, the title was called Letter of Support from DOT, but...
It's not the DOT. That, Area 15 is a planning agency, the regional planning agency.
I stated that wrong.
Well, maybe they should build the sidewalk to Walmart, then, that we've needed for several years. That's the only sidewalk I can think of that we don't have, that we had a fatality on.
Well, they certainly have helped us with receiving grant funding to do Safe Routes to School, that's...
They sure have turned us down on the Walmart, when, I'll tell you that right now. Well, we have the Nazarene Church there. We've yet to follow up with that code. I know it. And I don't understand why we're not, I mean, we're going to hit people for parking on the grass, but we're not going to follow up on a most important point here, Nazarene Church. I mean, I brought this up several times now. Why haven't they laid the sidewalk? And why haven't we done anything?
Again, as, as we've discussed several times, that was a stipulation of the development, is that...
He's right.
They could be required to put those in at a future date, and so if this council thinks now is the time, then the council has that ability to require that.
So are you telling me you need a motion, you need two members to get this on the books?
I would say, given the contentious attitude that I've received about this topic, absolutely.
Okay. I thought the agreement was they would put it in once we got the sidewalk through.
I think there have been a number of discussions about it.
Are we going off our topic item?
Yeah, we are.
Okay. Still sidewalk.
Can we call for a...
Yes, I'd like to call for a vote.
Yeah, I'll call for the question.
We'll call, please.
More?
Yes.
Versteg?
No.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hall Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Next item. Review and discussion of Oskaloosa Municipal Code Section 17.28.060B1 Parking Surface Type, 17.28.080B2 Parking Location Front Yard, and 10.48.06015 Parking Location Alley. This item was requested for review and discussion by Councilmember Van Zetten and supported by Councilmember Versteg. It's not an item that we will be taking action on this evening, but we certainly want to review and discuss. I guess it was requested by Councilmember Van Zetten, so I will open the floor to him at this point for commentary.
Well, I think we, Aaron brought it up last week about a gentleman that was parked on his grass, he got a code violation. I think we want to discuss it just a little bit, so I just kind of wanted to follow up particularly on that and find out more on that issue and what you had to think about it. I've heard he's got another violation, too, is that right? And what's it for? Same thing? He's parking across the street now. He's not supposed to park there, either. It's because he's parking on grass, correct? There's gravel, there's gravel there. If I park on my front lawn, that's illegal.
Yes, if you're not actively unloading or loading, that's correct.
You can't park in your front yard.
You cannot park in your...
This is where he's parking, right here. There's gravel, there's gravel there. It's just crowed over with weeds. They keep it mowed. There is gravel there, yes, there is. I went down and looked. There is definitely gravel there. All I guess I'm saying is, I'm not against the code, so to speak. I'm against where do we start and where do we stop? Let's use, let's use some common sense. This is not common sense. There are so many places in this town that are so far worse than this, I would say are a seven to a 10. Let's start with them and clean them up first. This is one or less. And when we do enforce the code, just like the sidewalk deal, we don't follow up on it. We've got a case right that his neighbor is supposed to have built a fence, what, two or three years ago, and hasn't done it.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The guy down to Ideal Manufacturing Company.
He's in compliance with the agreement.
We took him to court. He's supposed to have a fence in the back part of his property. It's not there yet. He's got junk cars in the front of that thing now that he says is used cars.
Councilmember Van Zetten, I'd be happy to provide you a copy of the...
I'm Councilmember Versteg, but that's fine. I'm just saying, let's use some common sense. Common sense has to come from you and from Mark, if this is where our code enforcement's going to start.
Was this incident a drive-by or a complaint?
It was a drive-by. This was in the right of way, and so I've been proactive, the staff.
What is that, I can't...
That's, I don't know, if it's a chair pushing. And so you can't put garbage out in the right of way. So that initiated the stop. That's when our officer noticed that vehicle, which is actually parked in an alleyway, parked in the front yard, parked on grass. So there were potentially three violations. Could have actually been cited for parking in an alley by the police department, but it wasn't. So allowing the system to work as it's supposed to, and this is the front of the property where he could park his vehicle. So allowing the system to work the way it's supposed to. We as staff initiated contact with the resident and asked them to correct the problem. We didn't cite them. They got a citation, but there's no cost to the person. We reached out to him, said, please, get the vehicle off the grass, put it on your driveway. Why would we do that? Because here's another example, right across the street from it, across the train tracks. It's on the same north side of the street. This property owner has obviously taken the liberty to park in the front yard and now has created a situation which I would say is pretty unsightly when the car's not there. And so they both got violation notices. So will we continue to do that? Yes, that would be my answer. That's in the code. It should be enforced. That's the expectation that you gave me as a group to try to raise the standard. I'm sure there are hundreds of violations that could be cited on any given day.
There is.
I think at this month, the last count I saw was 62 potential cases being worked, and that's just from the beginning of this month. So it's a pretty large issue for us to deal with. First, we were being told that we don't do what we're supposed to do, so now we're doing it, and now I'm getting pushback. It's a little confusing. It makes me a little hesitant to talk about rental inspection, because if you think this is bad, wait until that happens. And so I guess what I'm asking is, we should be, I would think, praising the staff for trying to enforce the codes that are on the book. And I don't even understand why we're having this conversation, honestly.
Well, we're having the conversation because it stretches on farther than that, and it goes back to using some common sense like he was talking about. This brings up some other things that look just fine. If I have a pea gravel driveway, am I in violation?
Pea gravel driveway.
If I have a gravel driveway inside the city, am I in violation?
No, if you have a hard surface driveway, it could be rock. There's specific language within the...
Any type of rock, I'm good with. I mean, I'm not coming after the city. I'm coming after stupid laws that were passed. And if they need to be fixed, let's fix them.
Then that's our responsibility.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This is crushstone.
Again, we asked them to start cleaning up the city. I don't think we can sit there and tell them to use common sense, because quite honestly, that can vary so much over the, you can't even go down that path. If the ordinance is wrong, the seven of us needs to change the ordinance. We can't sit here and tell Michael or his staff to pick and choose. I mean, you want to talk about getting the city in trouble. We start picking and choosing who or all, which ones, or sometimes, just can't happen. We need to be supporting them, and if we're asking them to enforce wrong ordinances, bad ordinances, well, let's change them, but let's not sit here and beat them up for quite honestly doing the job that we asked them to do a few months ago, which was, let's take our city to a higher standard.
I think you missed, we're not beating them up.
Well, it sure feels like it. We're not showing them a whole lot of respect the last few meetings, from my perspective.
Well, that's fine. That's your perspective.
Okay, and it is, thank you.
Okay. But we're trying to find out why we're enforcing this when we have other things out there. He went around, we just stopped at 43.
I had 45 violations, the first one alone, that was far worse than this one. That didn't get cited.
I haven't seen those violations. I mean, if you had sat down with me and could review our files and see if we actually have those on the books or not. I have no idea, Councilmember, if that's what, if we are working on the same page or not. So you might have 40 plus. I don't know how many of those we're already dealing with. I have no idea. You haven't communicated with me what those issues could be.
You know what, Doug? One other thing I want to jump in here. When I was elected, this, my seat should always fail with those people out there. And when I get calls, I'm going to back them. And if we got to go into the code and fix it, they're my number one.
I don't disagree. I think that's right on target.
That's all I have.
If they're raising the town.
Just one other thing about parking on the grass. Is there a difference between commercial grass and residential grass?
There's different, well, if it's in the front of the property...
Commercial properties, we have to look at their zone differently so that they're allowed to use the things in the direction.
So a commercial property can park on the grass?
Right. If we're going to go into inspecting commercial, that's a whole other, that's a whole other animal.
Grass is grass. You can kill the commercial grass just as easy by parking a trailer on it.
The way the zoning codes read, it's totally different. I'm just saying, there's difference between zoning in commercial versus residential. It's a whole different set of rules.
We just reviewed all this when we did the campers. We've all looked at this within the, it seems like less than a year.
Yeah, campers are now supposed to be on gravel. I guarantee you, there's a lot of them that aren't.
I know, but it's the same rules.
But we're not picking on them.
Yeah, well, but they are. You've either got to have the rules that enforce it or get rid of the rules.
And I guess that's where I'd like to come back to is, and again, I'll take it back to Councilmember Van Zetten. If there are either specific rules or ordinances that we need to deal with, do you have a suggestion on how we can do that? I mean, we could do a committee, we could do a study session involving all of us. You'll get absolutely no argument from me. If we have bad ordinance on the books, let's get rid of them.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd put a filter in that to filter that down to what we're trying to discuss here. And that's really what that allows you, is having to filter in there, filter that down, the good and the bad. I mean, a lot of the stuff that's on the books and our code books and all that garbage that goes on is dealing with 1% to 5% of the people in Oskaloosa, and then the rest of them have to pay the price for it. And everybody has to understand that as well. Do you, is there a way that you would like this to go?
No, I think, no, I think there was a point to this conversation that when we sit here and say, we're just going to follow the code just to follow the code, it's our job to follow up and to violate, to always fall on the side of the citizens and not to sit here and say, well, it's in the code, let our pit bulls go out and enforce it, not step forward and say, wait, is this wrong? This conversation got completely off track. This was bringing it forward and saying, hey, is this something that we want to do? Let's take a look at it. What is it encompass? I completely agree that you get into this huge gray area of how do you enforce this? How do you enforce that? But when we have complaints like this come forward, it's our responsibility to bring this to this table and review it, at very least. We owe it to them to do so.
Absolutely, but we can't sit there and say we need to use common sense. I mean, that, we need to get rid of codes, because everybody's view of common sense is going to be so different. Our option is to take care of the codes. We've got to get rid of them if it's that open to interpretation. And I'm asking, is there a direction that you would like us to try and go with that, since you brought this agenda item forward?
I think at this point, right now, I don't have any further discussion on this. I've got, it doesn't sound like we're going to get anywhere. I mean, we can kill it to committee, but I'm fine with it right now.
Since we're enforcing codes, though, are we still enforcing the two-hour parking around the square?
Oh, we have, yeah.
We're marking tires?
We dealt with an instance this...
Last week.
Last week.
So we're marking tires?
That was a specific complaint that we dealt with, but no, we're not necessarily...
Because I see a lot of business owners parked right in front of their business for four and five, six hours at a time, and I'm still getting complaints from the businesses that don't have any parking.
I've received one complaint, actually, in the last two years at twice.
So we're not enforcing that code unless somebody complains?
That's not always the case. That particular item, as we've talked about multiple times, we have not made it a high priority because we have not received a lot of complaints. We received one complaint from one business on a regular occasion, which we follow up with.
But somebody complained because a guy parked on the grass. But they didn't complain about that, but we enforce that one.
Again, we're trying to clean up the appearance of the community, and if that happened to be one of the items, yes, sir.
Maybe we ought to get the Blue Zone involved in the businesses around the square and have those people park in our city parking lots that are empty and walk up to their business and leave the parking for their customers.
We'll certainly work with Main Street and Blue Zones.
And we could even have them bike and put their bicycles down in that parking lot and walk. That way, they'd get double.
Okay.
That's a good idea. That's all I got.
All right, any other comments from anyone? None. The next item is reports from city staff, city manager.
Yes, sir.
Amy, city clerk?
I just wanted to point out that everybody should have gotten their new budget book tonight. It's the fiscal year 2015 amendment and fiscal year 2016 budget. I just also wanted to point out that this is on the city's website. You go to oskaloosiaowa.org under city government, and then city finances, you can find this book if anybody would care to look at it. There's also audits available out there.